To comply in the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I saw move.
Second?
A second.
Motion made in second, if those in favor.
Side.
The new business was started the ATV crossing, recommendations for the new ordinance and resolution. If you look on your map, you'll see the areas that I darkened. Those are the recommended areas that we felt were safest. Notice that Center Street, North and South First are not marked, but the fact is that pretty bad traffic hazard, and so decided to leave those out.
So if I'm coming down Bullard Canyon, where do I do?
On Fourth Street?
Well, I'm coming down pretty much on to Center. What else is there to come down?
Center.
Center?
You just have to go right or left.
So I can go on that to hit North F Crossing there.
The North Second Crossing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I come down Center?
Or I have to go all the way down E Street to hit the North South Fourth?
You can't go down E Street, that's why.
Can't go south. But there is an alley that runs from South Third through down to South Fifth.
So in other words, we've got a crossing at South Fourth that nobody can use.
They can use it if they can go up to Bullard.
If they're coming this way.
And go north, yeah.
But you can't come back that way.
You can't go south. That's why when you come up Fourth, you can turn there on G Street and go clear down to South Ninth.
Or North Second.
Or you can go up to North Second and cross. We gave you permission from Carl Tracy to use that alleyway between True Value and Les Schwab's that we need to put like a five mile limit there, because if they get out of hand, then he'll put a gate on it. If you'll look, you can cross from Roberta, and the only roads out on West Side that are closed off is West Side Road itself and Tunnel Hill. All the other roads is open. So you can actually go clear down Stock Drive, turn at Lake Ridge Road, cross the highway to Thomas Creek Road, and take off and go up into the mountains from there. So that's major. But these are basically the designated crossings, and reason for Rimrock isn't really in there because they don't really have any access. Darwin printed around these pictures. And this is the Rimrock here, and there's kind of a road around it. And then where this orange is, is actually an alley that belongs to the city.
There by the DMV?
No, it's right behind mine. It's right...
It's 22 houses.
Yeah, well, yeah, Buxton here and Seatinger Filbert lives here.
Oh, okay.
And it doesn't have a driveway entrance.
Yeah, there is a curb there.
Yeah, there is a narrow entrance like that, and then it goes behind Dave Kozak's house, my house, and it goes up to Barb's house.
They're supposed to run them that way.
But you can turn left here and go behind all these houses. When we made the original deal with Collins, because they were going to close off... Let me see where I am. Here on South F, this whole area where the Collins and the DMV and this whole thing, they were going to shut this alley off that you were looking at here, because, you know, they didn't need it and these people are having a problem with, yeah. And they realized that they couldn't because the town of Lakeview has a big sewer main in Barb's, the back corner of Barb's property, and that's the only way to get to it. So they left this, but he also agreed to leave this area that runs behind the motel all the way to Ninth Street as an alleyway. Now, when people start building in there, I don't know, you know, I'm gonna have to be careful about that, but yeah, that was the deal they caught.
But see, I don't know if Rimrock owns this or who actually does.
Yeah, but that's...
If they've been using it for a road.
The people who've been working on this have been using it. Nobody else has ever used this way that I know of.
But see, they are using this.
Oh, yeah. Everybody comes right here next to where Collins, Jay Collins, lives, and you just cut here and go back that way. It's wider, it's nicer. And it shouldn't exist. But yeah, if we keep those alleyways clear, make sure they're gonna be okay. And then, let's see, the only thing that that would gain people is going from here all the way down to Ninth, and they could do that right here.
Right, but this is a two-way street, so...
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
They could just keep going on this street.
Yeah.
Turn on Ninth and go out that way.
Also, North T Street on Highway 140 West, that'll take you right into the Fairgrounds, a straight shot over. And then Roberta is also the... But the only one crossing Highway 140 to get to the North End is North H, North Fourth and H. There's no other through areas up there.
Well, they'll have to figure it out.
And then if you interstate eight, that's basically, people that stay there can just draw a cross over to J Street.
Yeah, if you're... We're gonna have to be providing maps like this.
Yes, that's what Dr. Jessica about this too. This way we can, if they're kind of a book, where they can just tear off a sheet and have them at all the motels, in the chamber, and so.
Spending. Well, and that's where when we get into our next subject, you know, this discussion item, you know, on the lodging tax, that's where we could put some little things around town with maps, not just with this, but for other things, you know, that would, you know, help everybody.
This here is a little button.
Yeah.
Or a few other ones are out like this.
Yeah.
And the smaller. And then when Roberta and I were out at the PAC meeting, that the prisoners will make signs and stuff for little and nothing, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's actually the one in Ontario, the Seatinger makes the signs, but I've got to contact these stuff now. I just don't have her number, her direct line, but I know which who she is, so I have some signs making stuff pretty reasonable, so.
So the designations that are on the map that we're seeing right here are what, are in the ordinance or are they not inclusive in the ordinance?
We did not... The ordinance does have specific...
Specifically.
Right, so that's what, well, it either has to have an exhibit to this ordinance number 854.
That would reflect.
Yeah, that would reflect and designate the crossings.
Yes, it would be an attachment for this ordinance.
I would think we could do it that way, just amend it by adding, it would very universal. That'd be simple.
It would be very difficult to explain this crossing thing verbally, and an ordinance is gonna be lost, so I think that's probably...
I think the main thing that the town needs to make sure that we present in the maps is that 395 and 140 are, I mean, they need to be marked big hole off limits, because if we don't reflect that in our own governance, then we'll be abused by...
The state highways, you know, are off limits.
So the map that we come up with doesn't need to designate such. But as far as the crossings, I...
I think they're as good as we're gonna get without disrupting major traffic areas. I agree. You don't want them going down Center.
And I appreciate Mr. Tracy. I recalled in our meetings earlier that we had that alleyway there, and I thought it was the town, but it said it is and stepped up and allows the usage. I appreciate that. That's...
Yes, Eric, I'm wondering if I have written it in the...
We probably should check and just make sure.
He'll be here at the next meeting, so.
Because I think we had looked at it and it was town property, I thought, but like I say, whatever it is, it's good that we're doing this.
But I do think we need that agreement memo understanding or something we have to have.
Because I think we have to.
It's always best.
Looks good.
Okay, we'll get the ordinance set up to where they match the map and...
What were the roads that you said on the West Side that were closed? West Side and...
West Side Road and Tunnel Hill. Is it on that one map there?
That marks this county?
Not that one. That's North Right. That one. Okay, let's move on. Let's go to lodging tax, maybe decisions or decision, excuse me.
It starts when April? April first? I think this is...
Perfect.
So the first funds that we actually see from the state for us to disperse probably won't be here until...
Like three months after. And it'll probably be done like the marijuana tax or all these other taxes on that quarterly basis.
Quarterly report.
So it'll probably be in the June, you know, yeah.
So April, May, June, and then June, September. If I'm not mistaken, it takes, and so it's...
July, September.
It takes at least a month, six weeks to two months before you actually get that money in, Diane. So we might likely see until late August, I would think.
Sometimes they come in a little bit, they're usually a month or a cycle.
A month is quick, because now, will our funds do like the current county funds? Will they come, those funds come directly to us, or do they come to the county and the county disperses it?
Ours will come to us in the county.
That's nice.
So ours won't be held up, because it has to go probably through the county and down to the chamber, which is in that regard.
Right, yeah. Ours will come here.
That has counted.
Direct deposit or whatever.
Yeah, and that's what it'll do, go into that IP account and then probably, because that's how the new marijuana is coming in, so right into that, yeah, so.
So the things that we need to be working on now are not what the advisory board will be doing, because the advisory board is to review requests from those in our community, such as perhaps the chamber who's here, the partnership. I don't know who might come and request, because everyone will be able to request as long as they get the guidelines. The advisory committee or the board, whatever we deem calling, is not gonna really have any reviews until probably we get some money to think we can disperse of.
Right.
And so...
We've got to have it these two things, and the...
Two to half. So like you said, Sharon, August is when the advisory board would actually start doing something.
Certainly not probably before then, but you would want it appointed before then, because I think you're gonna have to make very clear and justify what the duties are and what the limitations are and what, why, you know, what agencies, what groups can apply or what reasons, I guess may be more important for applying, because some of the comments that have been made in the past, some people are looking at this as an allez-a-allez auction free fund for anybody who needs money to support whatever their endeavors are. For instance, and I don't, I'm using them totally out of this not something that I have reference to, but just that I'm on the cultural coalition board, and so we have usually six to maybe $7,000 a year we can disperse. Well, one of the groups that always asks us for money is the group of ladies who do china painting, and they do beautiful jobs, and they bring in a specialty, some woman usually who's a special artist and teaches some new techniques, and they bring kids in so that they come into the, you know, doing something for youth and something like that, but it's not for tourists, you know. So they would not be have access to this fund, and that's what we're gonna have to be dealing with, because there's gonna be people who are saying, "Oh, yeah, we would love to have this money to do this," but it has to be aimed at tourism.
Or town services, that 30%?
Those guidelines have got to be very...
30% can be for town service, that's what it says, and then the 70% is towards tourism. So whether it be kiosks we put or football map places or, you know, that, and then who are we going to give it to? Is it gonna be like the bicycle, you know, Outback, the Tour de Outback, or is it, you know, all the other things that the table has, have people coming in and we're bringing people to, so we need to kind of have those defined or outlined.
Can I say a little bit on that?
I think you could say it.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Can she say something? This is called getting your oil in the water.
So this morning, I just wanted to give you guys kind of a heads up on what the chamber is doing, since you guys are starting to have these talks about your, what we're gonna be doing with your 70% towards tourism. So it was voted this morning, and I've met a couple times with a woman through Vividly Imaging who's gonna be working on kind of a really new, exciting thing for the chamber. We are gonna be hosting a tourism website, so it's going to be tourism based, so it's going to be pretty much the face of Lake County and Lakeview, so it's gonna feature chamber members, but it's going to, here's the kind of front of it. This is gonna be basically the only tourism website Lakeview and Lake County have. We don't have one currently, and there's no talks of anyone wanting to do that. We checked with county, and they are not interested in doing that. They would just like to have their own page. She's also gonna be working with them. But this is something that is going to directly benefit the hotels. It'll be able to showcase what rooms you have available, if they have specials. It'll be a really, it would be a really nice benefit for them if some of that money could go towards this as seen directly as we're actually helping promote, we're helping, you know, we're watching what you guys are needing, we're able to put on accommodations on that hotel site, on our site, and it's really just a tourism site. I mean, it's something that they'll pop up and look at. They'll be able to, they could see the geyser, they could see the crack in the ground, but they can also see our local businesses, our local hotels, seat check availabilities, look at the roundup, look at fairgrounds.
And what will the website name be?
It's All About Lake County.
Okay. Enough said. The town of Lakeview is trying to create an identity of its own, and I think that's what we all discussed. I understand that we told you that we would work with you in regards to a lot of things, but to say that that's the only tourism oriented website, the town of Lakeview may decide to do with their monies just what you're saying, someone else from outside's.
No, that, I mean, we can do that.
No, I understand, but that's...
Well, and we could do something else.
I mean, you told us that again, it's gonna be the only one. Well, that's unfair to the town of Lakeview, because Lakeview needs its identity. That's why we came up with a lodiers tax fund, so that we could create that. It's not added. It's everything that has been Lake County.
Right. We're just calling it All About Lake County to encompass everything, so that we're able to showcase all that.
And perhaps we could put part of our funds into yours, but to say that that's going to be the only one, I think is unfair to the town.
But there'll be one whole section that is Lakeview.
Yeah.
But it's not...
Most of our...
No, that's fine. That's great. If it's getting that extra exposure, but two websites is better than one.
Do you want them to know this?
It's current, hm, the Kick Your Boots Off and...
Stay a while. My phrase that the chamber chose this morning was Kick Your Boots Off and Stay a While.
So it's something currently, we don't currently have, and maybe I missed folk, but we don't currently have a tourism website, a tourism based website for Lakeview, Lake County, the chamber, anything. When you, when people are searching for things to do, this is what we've hired, is we've hired someone that when someone puts in rodeo or when someone puts in, you know, farm trails or ranching, or ours will be one of those that pops up to someone sitting in Chicago that wants to go, and, you know, if they put those keywords in, we're essentially paying for one of ours to be, for that site to be popped up and looked at. So it's also something that's really manageable and that can be reported back to the community really easily. We will get a report on how many followers we have. We get a report on what's trending, what's popular, what people are looking at on our website, how many people come back to our website, how many people are going onto our social media, and, I mean, social media is a pretty easy and fast and free way to get things searchable and keep things going. So if we hashtag Lakeview on our site and they click on that and it pops up to your site, and we're all kind of branding the same, the county, the town, the chamber, all of it looks kind of the same, people remember that as sister logos and sister taglines, all to benefit all of us, the town, the county, all of us.
And if they're looking for restaurants and motels, what kind of one would I hear?
They're right here.
The only one of real interest that we don't have is Cowboy Dinner Tree.
But they'll be able to have, you know, to stay here and venture out on a day trip there, so we're, Lakeview is the hub of the county, and this town does have its own identity, and it has the most of it, so we wanna highlight that as well. Most of our members are in Lakeview, and most of the draw is in Lakeview.
And most of our members are this factory. We pretty much have most of the businesses in Lakeview right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Also on that website, you put the, like, the Irish days in there, the...
It'll be able to...
Everything.
Everything will be in that. Yep, everything will be in that.
Centered here.
Yeah.
Like the rodeo.
Also, a lot of our, you know, recreational stuff, you'll be able to see ATV maps on there. You'll be able to, you know, if you put in ATV, that site should be one of them that pops up in Oregon, so that's what we're paying for, and that's what, you know, that's the kind of thing that we're doing. It'll pop up that way. It'll be available in a search, instead of them having four different websites to look at with town. It's gonna be linkable, it's gonna be easy for people to navigate, and it will be very identified with town. I mean, if you, if they want to come here and ride their ATVs, they can look on that website and see what they can do, what they can't do. It'll have current, you know, everything current. We've hired her to do just that. So she's already hired, she's already working on it.
So it's actually your website, but she's somebody that's administering it?
Yeah, we've hired, we've hired this company, Vivid, so she's going to, she's actually like a marketing team, so that...
They're going to sell to the town of Lakeview and other entities in the In Village advertising for the website?
We will have a page for outside. I'd like to have like some advertisers on there, like Sun River, Running Y, that kind of thing to bring in more available, more looks, more, you know, that's what we want in a website. You want people to look, stay, plan their trips along with it.
But what we already, our obligation is to the members, so if Juniper, pardon, RV wants, he's already a member, so he gets mentioned on it. So the people who are members, this is part of their, what they're getting is a membership benefit. If, I suppose if somebody said, "Well, you know, this is the time, this is our height of our season," Juniper says, "I want a special ad to bring people in," then they'll probably pay a little extra, but he already has his member benefits and will be served through this.
And so we are members as a talent.
Like in the amount of Lakeview.
As a chamber, so.
So it's, I want it mainly as a tourist draw. I wanna be able to reach people that may be passing through, may be close to driving through to Lakeview, people that are interested in staying the night and passing through in Lakeview should be able to click, just like when you're traveling anywhere and you, you don't normally get on the chamber page, you get on a, you know, a fun little website takes you all around, and you can look at the room, and you can look at the town, and you can find out where you're gonna have dinner, and you can, you know...
Show to...
Yep, I'm a bike, I like to ride bikes, so the hill, here's right here, the Tour de Outback, I might come back for that later. So it's all in one condensed area, and if we do, it'd be wonderful if town had, you know, town did that as well. I just wanted to get you guys thinking about all of us, all three of us working together so that we're all similar, that we all have sister logos, sister brands, so that we're all benefiting that, and I also wanted to get that thinking on how you're gonna be spending some of your funds. This isn't a huge expense for us. It's not enormous. It wouldn't be, you know, we already get some from county. We are gonna be paying an amount for up to a year, and then it'll drop down to a maintenance fee, so it's not gonna be
Ongoing.
An ongoing thing. All of our brochures will all be the same color scheme, they'll all be the same logo on it, they'll all have the same tagline on it. Everything will be similar, and so she's working with county, so everything will be kind of similar that way too, that hopefully the same color scheme, hopefully the same, you know, so it's all, so we look professional. We look like a fun, modern, fresh, new place to visit is our goal.
Sounds good.
So my comments were more about process and to just encourage you to put together your committee, advisory committee or whatever as soon as possible, because this time will go by very quickly, and I think that you're gonna want to really be very thoughtful about how you put your process together and how it's gonna work, the access to it, and who can apply, et cetera, all of that, because it will take time for you to go through that.
Just getting the guidelines very clear.
Yeah, exactly.
And getting new versions.
Yeah, I wasn't even gonna make a shameless pitch for LCP and the Alge, so.
You are, but you didn't mention that.
I really appreciate that. That was remarkable.
We have to, we have to. That's, it's one of the...
No, I'm just, I'm interested in that, because I've assisted not specifically with lodging tax or anything like that, but with other small, well, like, for instance, the cultural trust group, when they first started up, I won't even try to figure out how many years ago.
We don't wanna go there.
Well, yeah, I was involved with Jackson County and Josephine County when we, when we put that together, and, you know, we were innocent and, you know, babies in the woods, "Oh, this won't be any big deal to put it together," and it actually, it wasn't a big deal, but it just took us more time. Everything always takes more time, so that's, I was just gonna encourage you to do that.
Yeah, I think, and I think that we haven't decided how many members should be on this even, you know, so are you going to five?
It could be five or seven, or whatever, there's different...
I would encourage us not to make it so small that it becomes inbred, or so large that it becomes impossible, and... that it becomes impossible. And I want it very clear that we have the yea or nay on the membership of that committee.
Absolutely. Because we decided the ones that are going to have to select. Yeah, so...
And that committee or the advisory, and that's why advisory is inclusive or needs to be inclusive in the name is, that they advise us on what they see as the best picture for the promotion of Lakeview Oregon from the proposals that have come forward through them. And hopefully we'll have some money that has been reserved in our account that if there's some holes can be filled by management or whatever here at the Town of Lakeview or the council can decide on additional, you know, funds to be spent elsewhere. But I, I think the advisory board is going to be tasked with a good job of trying to make the best use of those funds. And we're going to have to listen to their recommendations. And if we approve those, then...
Okay.
Yeah, no, it should be our final approval.
I would say it's, yeah, it needs to be approval here at this level. Otherwise, you get yourself into a trap of saying, well, I think that was a stupid pick on their part, you know, and that's not the point of this. The point is, they go through, they call through it, they listen to the presentations, they, and then if we have questions, we can always call people back in to talk to us too.
But they'll be making recommendations.
They, yeah, and they will say, no, you're, you're way off base for this. This is not what it's for and solve that issue with us. So, yeah, I think that's, but you're quite right. It does take time to set this up. And it was absolutely miserable setting all the cultural trust.
Oh, no. I, I, no, I was trying to be, I was trying to be positively encouraging about how these processes are going.
But we don't have, we're not doing this day. We don't have to have that whole bylaws on all that mission in the state.
But really, you know, you do need, the council needs...
You need guidelines.
Yeah. And the council needs to have a final word. I mean, ultimately, all are the ones that are responsible for it. So, it really truly is an advisory committee that, you know, does the heavy lifting and then makes the recommendations to you guys. So...
So, what, what would you recommend for a committee before the council has the last say?
It's like Karen said, you know, seven or five is what is kind of a norm in different communities here in Oregon and as well other states. But I, I think our community is limited on the number of people and personnel that can give up time for various functions. And so I think five is plenty good. I think if you try to, you know, if you can set it and you can get that many, whatever, that's fine. But I think five would be a good, give them out. And as far as, I have passed along some information to Roberta. There are various ways that you can go about it that I think would, would work and that would be by placement of perhaps people in different industries that are involved in tourism. But I kind of like the idea of finding out who in our community takes it to heart and actually going out for resumes or requesting those from the community that feel that they could be advantageous to the cause to participate. And then the council can take over those resumes. I think even some of the stuff that I gave to Roberta that gives a clear cut way to build your resume.
There's an actual application of...
That's okay.
You know, the person for the advisory committee would fill out and then would select them maybe through... One basic question on this, which I think is kind of important. Are we limiting the membership on this advisory board to Lakeview residents?
Definitely. Yeah, definitely. It needs to be.
I mean, it's kind of one of those things.
Well, it's what we, we might buy.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and it is Lakeview money that's going to be spent on it. So, I think it should be. And the problem is, is the first, when you start talking about people with passion, I'm thinking of several names.
And they live outside. And that's exactly what I was thinking. So, maybe we could, we could, whatever the council, you know, choose to do, you might have one member at large outside of the town or, you know, something like that, just, you know, one person or something to maybe help bring it all together. Because I can think of several people, but they all live outside.
Well, Francis...
Oh, go ahead.
One thought I just had is that you might want to think about what the representation is that you want to have before you decide your number. Five or seven is probably, you know, somewhere in there is probably good, but you might, odd numbers always good. You might want to think, like you said, a member from out large, a member from...
Motels.
Yeah, motel, a member from the town at large, you know, somebody involved with the Chamber, somebody involved with economic development. I don't know, the county, maybe, maybe one, somebody...
They deal a lot with people from, you know, coming here and provide a lot of information for people coming.
Yeah. Possibly somebody from the county, you know, I don't know. I'm just talking off the top of my head.
We have an awful lot of interest at the Chamber level from ranching. And I would think that if we're going to have an out, at large from the area, that the only way you're going to get a rancher is to open that up to one person from county at large. But to have a ranching person there fits in well with where we seem to be going. Forest Service, Jessica has set up some really fine partnerships with the Forest Service and their people. And so, I think we would have too much trouble getting somebody from the Forest Service anyway. And maybe the other, I don't know, one or the other, somebody has a foot in both pots, but...
Well, I would recommend that you keep the residents of Lakeview, the ones that are involved and that the ranchers that live in our community, which there are many who have houses right here in town, call town, their home, their homeland around, would be the ones that you would choose. I can think of one right off the bat. And I, he's not a rancher now, but he knows a lot about our ranching heritage in the surrounding area that lives in town. And that's Will Cahill. And, you know, I'm just saying, there is a base within Lakeview that we can choose from. We don't have to go outside of our jurisdiction, just as the county doesn't, you know, go outside of its jurisdiction in the state, you know, so. I think we can draw within our own. And we'll be drawn for the Town of Lakeview that way. And it could be that somebody from the Chamber that lives in town. But I think they need to have that commitment for the Town of Lakeview, just as we have to have the commitment as the council. It's not our choice if we live out of town to serve here.
So, planning commission, I can't remember, but do we allow two from out of the area or all of ours have to be city?
I would think it would all be within. I'm surprised if it's...
Well, okay, that was my other city. They had two from outside the city limits.
Is that right?
Within the urban growth area. And then all the rest had to be, I couldn't remember what.
In town.
Yeah, yeah.
The thing that right now, if we're starting in April to collect the taxes.
Yes.
I forwarded a bunch of information in regards to forms that I think would be advantageous for us to look over and approve, to administer. Roberta, I think, is plenty capable of designing one that will function within the town government and for the administration here. She probably has more ideas than I could throw out. And so, those, you know, those are things that I think we need to see if the council, what we're going to do first off, and that's collect money from our lodgers. They need to know what's going on. We need to work on that endeavor first to make sure that they understand what's happening to them, that it is an additional tax. It's not associated with, and I think there's even letters and stuff that are included in packets that, all of what I provided is available online. So, I would invite any of you to go online. It's, you know, I will tell you that I have served on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board as chairman in two communities. And I moved from one to another because I did so. I had to pretty much form another advisory committee in another town, but they were both tourism communities and they both functioned very well together. And I think that that relationship could happen. It was in Redoso, in Redoso Mountains, New Mexico, and a very tourism-oriented community. And it's, you know, something that I've seen from the birth of a lodger's tax advisory board to just sitting on a board that was already established. So, there are a lot of things that I think Roberta and the administration here at Town Hall are going to be very busy with in getting it all underway. And I wish them luck. I think we can have it dubbed in your laps, but I think it'll be very fruitful for the Town of Lakeview to see, to see it all come about. And I think in perhaps two years, you'll notice that Lakeview has an identity. And I don't mean to bring that up again, but when you pass the website material around, I flip through it and the only thing that there is Lake County. And I realize that it's for you and was designed for you as a sales presentation to you to buy that website. But that's what I'm pointing out is, you know, the website name itself is all about Lake County. And, you know, it needs to have Lakeview as an identity. And if there's two websites and y'all are perhaps spending money on ours and we're spending money on yours, then that's more bang for your buck. That is allowable by the state statutes to where your advertising and promotion dollars are spent in ways that they can bring people to our community. And I'm not doubting that what you propose would do so.
Lakeview would, I mean, it was a, yeah, what I presented was her sales pitch to us this morning.
Right.
It was basically based on fonts and colors and choices and how this, how that would look. So, we've had several discussions. Lakeview is a huge part of my job and I, there's no way around not featuring Lakeview. I don't, with all the seminars and conferences and things that I've gone to lately about social media and how big of a presence that is, the more websites is just confusing for people. People, you get a bigger bang for their buck when there's, when there's one. If it sets off into another, like county and town, then, and kind of stays on the same tourism website and links off into other sites, people still, still really like that. They still stay on the same thing. They don't get lost in the web, kind of a thing, and can't find their way back. But it's all going to be promotional. There's, like I said, this is the hub of, this is most of our members. This is where the, where the lodging is going to see them. If they see that you're a part of their promotions, you know, that's going to help, I think, overall with this new, with this new tax. I mean, if they're seeing, well, they're involved in this and we've got this going now and my, you know, my numbers went up, my rooms are booked and we're featured in these, in this website, it's a tourism website. And that's what, you know, that's what we're trying to do is just create more buzz for town, for county, for, you know, for all of us, for the greater good. I mean, Lakeview is where it's at. I mean, people will go and visit around in the county, but Lakeview is the biggest, you know, part of it. So, it's going to, of course, be a huge draw and a huge feature. And most of our businesses will be Lakeview businesses.
So, why not call it All About Lakeview, Lake County?
Because we decided on that other name.
Okay. We didn't get a decision.
But you'd leave it hazily in Christmas Valley.
It's going to be all about Lakeview, hazily ply, or not ply, but I mean, just, yeah, all these.
I understand that, but yeah.
Or the, I mean, we're the Lake County Chamber. So, we're trying to stay near our name as well. We're going to be, you know, running it, keeping all the numbers, keeping everything going, keeping the content, all of that. Well, and when we update our website, you know, which we have to do, then, you know, something like it. It'll be a lead, yeah. Go focus our portion just on Lake County where, and that's something that we could possibly use some of this money for designated tasks, you know, upgrading on...
Building our website.
Building our website and focusing on tourism because that's what, I mean, that's just the thought process.
That's promotional.
But it's good though, because we need it.
Yeah, yeah.
Bad, you know, so we're all together.
Mm-hmm.
My granddaughter is still listed on the website as the manager of the Lakeview Pool, which I think was...
Would keep changing things as it flips back a few years ago. But we are going to, I probably either real soon or right at the fiscal, you know, new, July, we're going to get one because we can't just...
You might want to talk to this brand lady.
Yeah. This lady Victoria, yeah.
Okay.
Because now, what was through that, what's it called? Godat? No, not Lord. What's yours that used to be through? We had ours through Wrinkle Dog. And so, now we're...
You changed it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to completely do that. We're not going to have just a Chamber website anymore. We're not going to use that at all.
Okay.
But I'll come talk to you. Yes.
So, I think...
That might make sense.
Yeah. What we're looking for and see who we get in here, who applies for those positions or for this committee, and then just take it from there.
Yeah, we can run radio and newspaper and let people know that we need them.
Okay. All right, we move on to discussion on bank proposals.
Can I ask a question? Just a chicken and an egg thing. Is the council going to design the parameters around which the applications are going to be before they bring on an advocacy committee?
Yeah, that's, I think, Roberta's going to get that.
Or are they going to have the advocacy committee help design those parameters?
No, no, that will be done by the council and the management side.
Thanks, good.
Mostly we'll say, what do you have for us?
And I will have a lot.
That's it.
No, I, I don't, I've been on boards where they've said, okay, basically, we're starting from scratch. And that is a royal pain to go through. And I, I personally would advise a person never to go for that. But if you have the regulations set out, if you have all that work done, then yes, you can say, I can abide by these, I can agree to these, yeah, I'd like to do this. But yeah, we will do it.
Exactly.
We will, we will set it up because I don't want anybody to have to go through that process. I don't want us to have to go through it. We don't have a choice.
Thanks.
We in a large sense here.
Okay. Anything else on that? Let's move on to our discussion on bank proposals.
That's a regular thing. Well, it's also a discussion here in the work session. Do you see that, Deb? I don't see it.
I do have a question in regards to the reports that we've been getting include an enormous amount of bank charges for individual cards. And I know you had mentioned in a previous meeting that it was kind of amountable of what we do get assessed.
Yeah, we get an analysis fee of almost $500 a month, which is absolutely ridiculous.
So, I don't know what you've come up with since then, but it stands out for sure.
Yeah, it's been unreal. And we got three proposals. One was from Anquabank, one was from Pacific Crest and Washington Mutual. And actually, and you can go ahead and, you know, talk a few questions, but yeah.
Just as a, I think you should have a spreadsheet in your packets where I looked at it. Actually, our US Bank charges on average over the last 12 months have been $520 a month. And you add to that, their website lets us pay our bills, but not adjust or change or turn cards on and off or anything like that. And the person who handles their government banking was summarily left the company the same as I started working here. They still haven't replaced that person. So, there's not even a contact person I can talk to at US Bank currently. So, based on all of that, we went out and asked for proposals from, on Pacific Crest, from Anquabank and from Washington Mutual. I have those actual proposals here if you want to look through them. The bottom line is that Pacific Crest will let us open accounts like any other member and use it just like any other member, but it doesn't give us all of the functionality we need. It doesn't allow us to use credit cards. It doesn't allow us to add electronic payments or direct deposit for employees or any of those things. So, it's really, really cheap, but you're not getting... those things, so it's really, really cheap, but you're not getting a lot of functionality. Um, Amquah Bank, um, its proposal was just downline all the same stuff that US Bank gives us, they can also give us, um, and the average cost for that will run about two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty dollars a month, so that's everything in half right away.
And they have an officer.
And they have an officer in Portland that I would speak for constantly. Um, Washington Mutual, um, did the same thing, they have everything everybody else has, this is how they would go about doing it, in addition to having some additional, um, functionality like positive pay and being able to credit card on and off remotely and those sorts of things, their average cost is gonna be about a hundred dollars a month, hundred to a hundred and ten a month. Um, they also have a person, um, this person stays student in Seattle, that handles Oregon, Washington, Idaho and is also, um, a direct connection to the, um, branch manager here at Washington Mutual, so in addition to having a contact person for government banking, we would be able to get more assistance from a local bank branch rather than that just being totally removed out of the business. Um, in addition, um, Amquah Bank would give us a two hundred and fifty dollars towards our first purchase of checks and things like that and, um, sixty days of service charge free completely and Washington Mutual would give us ninety days of free transactions and five hundred dollars towards purchases of checks and credits and all of that. Either, um, Washington Mutual will allow us to set up direct deposits for our payroll immediately as a part of our changeover at no additional charge and there was a very small fee from Amquah to do that for us.
So, it sounds like more concessions from Washington Mutual.
Meaning
By far. By far. And we don't have to do it all at once, cause it's gonna be a transition period to put using US Bank in an end commercial, but we don't have to put it all in one thing, but, uh, just as an example, we have a CDB over here at US Bank and I believe it makes ten cents a month on interest, ten cents a month and it's, you know, twenty-five thousand a month, that's not a fair assumption, you know, um, that's pretty cheap, you know, and then the other one, we already have one over at, uh, Washington for two hundred and three thousand, um, you know, but, yeah.
And the, the rates at this point for US Bank is point zero, zero one, the rate at, um, Amquah is point one and the rate at Washington Mutual is point three.
Or exactly percent.
Percent, uh, Washington Mutual is point three.
Point one, so point one, point three.
Right.
We, we go again.
Okay, um, US Bank is point zero one.
Well, on our
Right, on our, on our interest on our accounts, um, Amquah Bank would be point one, which is significantly better and Washington Mutual is point three.
So, once again.
So, once again, significantly better.
And do they, um, so many times you get that initial, wow, this is a good deal and then in ninety days or a few hundred and seventy
A balloon, a balloon
Yeah, all of a sudden.
Okay, that was our honeymoon period now.
No, no, these are introductory offers.
Okay, so this is a solid
What you're getting from the gate door.
This is, this is what you're getting going forward.
Because that would bother me because it's, it sounds like there really isn't a whole lot of choice to be made.
Yeah. And it's, it's really interesting that it is proportion, the prices for charging, um, in the case of Amquah and Washington Mutual are proportional to the overall size of the deposit base, so it sort of makes sense, um, I just don't know why US Bank is such a huge outlier, that's, that's the part that's confusing.
Thank you. So, we get all the services we have to have, but we don't pay as much for them.
Exactly.
Sounds like a over in a I mean, that's, I, I
That's financial things I can figure out.
Right.
Anything more complicated than saying
You know, and like I say, there'll be a process, it won't be overnight, you know, but I think it's
I think it's a move we need to make.
So, that, we will vote on that in the council.
Right, and kind of a, just a heads up on that, even though that would drop the current day charges by about eighty, eighty-five percent, um, we are looking at getting, um, credit card processing services so that people can pay either online or come in and pay with a credit card or that and that will be an additional charge regardless of who we go with because that's kind of like totally different.
But that would be through the bank account, I mean, it would, yeah, that's excellent.
That would be so nice, and we get that request one or two times a day probably, yeah.
We could do that through, as you say, our own municipal website and have all looking in as long as you type in the bank
If we have it, it's website. Cause right now it wouldn't work very well.
I don't trust them, but I have And we're saving about two hundred and fifty or something like that.
It will be the difference between about seven thousand and about fifteen hundred in a, in a year, that's a significant
Big difference, and I'm glad y'all looked into it.
Oh, we did, cause we were frustrated, we didn't market it in service. And with no local person, I mean, even in Medford or wherever it was, to even talk to.
It's hard to reach out, huh?
Yeah, the, the government, just relatively, the government person for US Bank is supposed to be in Medford, the one for Amquah is supposed to be in Portland and the one for Washington Mutual is supposed to be in Seattle, but there has not been a person filling that position in US Bank in the entire time I've been here and I have direct cell phone numbers, call me anytime from both the Amquah person and the Washington Mutual person, so
Huge difference.
Yep.
Okay, we'll finish discussing that in the regular council session. We will close the work session at four fifty-seven.
Four fifty-four.
Give a few minutes and we'll start the regular session.